I'd like to call to order our Board of City Commissioners meeting for June 20th. Call or roll, please.
Angie.
Here.
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 Shaw.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Last step.
Here.
We have a quorum, okay? If you're able to stand, please stand with me and join in the Lord's Prayer, please.
Our Father, who art in heaven, thou wouldst be in thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespasses in us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Commissioner Shaw, will you lead us in a flag salute, please?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull two items from the consent agenda for discussion. And that's one D and one-
Wait, 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 one D?
One D and one H2.
Okay. Okay, you can talk. What about D?
At this time, I'd like to just make a motion that we approve these separately. I move to-
For each, you want to go down each one? Line by line?
No, all of them at one time.
Okay.
What? I don't understand what you're saying.
So, she's making a motion to, I think that I understand, she's making a motion to approve one A through C, E, F, G, and H1?
Make a motion to approve all agenda items except one D and one H2.
Okay, well, I think in the last procedure, we discussed the ones that we were pulling, right?
Well, I'll second. It'll get approved, so.
Any commissioner has the ability to pull an item from the consent agenda.
Right.
If they are pulled from the consent agenda, then if they're removed from the consent agenda, procedurally, we need to go ahead and address the remaining consent agenda.
Okay.
And then take those items up and do course.
Okay. So, is your motion to approve the remaining consent agenda? Is that what you just said?
Correct.
Okay. Michael, did you second it?
I'll second.
Commissioner Doxter, sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay. Now, let me see. You want to address-
D.
D first, okay?
Yes, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments. As a separate action, no discussion.
I didn't hear what you-
I'll second.
So, we're voting on approval of this?
So, yeah, it works the same way as it would have been the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. And a second. Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, is it two?
H2. I'd like to make a motion that we table this action at this point in time and reconsider just extending the existing contract until such time as our mayor-elect and new city commissioners come onboard.
What time would that be? Will that be till-
September, the end of September. First of September. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, point of procedure. If we table it, that will just take the item as is and put it on to the next agenda. So, I don't think it's appro- I don't think the motion would be appropriate to table if you're wanting to extend on a month-to-month or until September basis the interim contract. I think that's a separate motion absent a table. Does that make sense?
What if there's no motion at all? Will it just be month-to-month?
If there's no motion, this would die for lack of a second and the existing contract would expire and you would be without a city attorney.
So, you're not a month-to-month? We can't just keep-
It doesn't automatically go month-to-month. It's not like a lease. The original contract had a term, and that term was June 30th. And so, when it expires, that contract would expire and there would be no replacement. That creates an issue under the charter because there is a requirement to have a city attorney.
Could we extend this through the end of August until September?
That motion could be made. I just didn't want it to be confused because a motion to table would mean that this exact agenda item would have to be moved to the next.
Okay, so moved on that.
Just shorten the term to the end of the-
Through the end of August.
Of August? The end of September. You went until October when they get sworn in, right?
They're sworn in in the first meeting in September.
In September, okay.
Question. What are the conditions, Joe, to terminate this contract for the commission?
There's several provisions within the contract, but essentially, it's at-will for both parties. I mean, it can be terminated on 30 days' notice really for any reason.
That's what I thought.
What are the penalties to-
There's no penalty. We didn't put a penalty in.
We understand the fluidity of the situation.
Then, I remove my motion and-
Motion to approve the-
Motion to approve H2.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
My pleasure, Commissioner.
We have a motion to approve H2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doxter. Motion carries. Item number two is citizens' participation. At this time, we encourage any citizen to come forward and share something with us if they have anything they'd like to share with us. Okay, no one coming forward, then? I will move on to item number three. It's presentation by the city manager to employee of the month, Casey Bashhofer, City Clerk Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Casey, please come on up. My pleasure to introduce to you Casey Bashhofer. She is Employee of the Month for June. Casey has been with the City of Shawnee since March of 2015, works in the City Clerk's office. She's a lifelong resident of the Shawnee-Tecumseh area. In the time she has been at the clerk's office, she's been extremely well and is considered a great asset to the department. She goes above and beyond her duties routinely, which is evident as she assists the water department on a routine basis. During her time away from work, Casey enjoys hiking and spending time with her family. Thank you so much, Casey.
Okay, item number four, consideration and possible action to cancel the July 5, 2016 city commission meeting. I think we've done this in the last, what, three years or something?
Is that staff's recommendation?
Yes, sir. We do try to look for opportunities usually around Christmas and New Years, and then also in around the Fourth of July if possible. And so, we've tried to put everything on the agendas in June that were timely. So, staff has no objection to cancellation of the July 5 meeting.
So moved.
Cancel. July 4th, ladies and gentlemen.
Got a motion here by the vice mayor. You want a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay.
I think you got it.
Let's vote.
All right.
Motion carries, okay? Item number five, discussion and consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance repealing and amending Article 8 of the Shawnee Municipal Code regarding pawnbroker dealings. I think there was quite a bit of communication through the email about this. So, Justin, would you like to give a report?
I'd be happy to. On June 15 of 2015, the city commission passed ordinance 2569. Shortly thereafter, a suit was filed against the city for violations, for alleged violations of state statute with regard to regulation of pawnbrokers. And so, this is a case that is an act of litigation, so I won't be able to discuss details publicly with you, but you did receive some confidential correspondence from council regarding that. Also, in this legislative session, the state of Oklahoma has adopted some revised state statutes with respect to pawnbrokers. So, what is before you this evening, if enacted, is an ordinance that will modify portions of Shawnee Municipal Code to ensure compliance with the new state statute and also to assist us with the dismissal of ongoing litigation. So, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, let me be clear in my mind here, Justin. We did incorporate what council had indicated were necessary changes, and we did look at the Oklahoma Pawnbroker or Pawn Shop Act to ensure that we're in compliance.
Yes, ma'am. So, the intent is that this ordinance will hopefully work well for us long-term.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion in this matter.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Shaw. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Agee. Okay, would you read it, please, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance repealing and amending portions of ordinance number 2569 NS of the Shawnee Municipal Code, open quotation, pawnbroker, close quotation, dealing with licensure, providing for a register, setting hours of operation, requiring reporting, setting out requirements for acceptance of various communications devices, setting a penalty, providing for repealer, severability, codification, and declaring an emergency.
We probably need to do an emergency clause. Can we do it all in one thing? Now, we have to vote on it separately.
Yeah, that has to be a separate, two separate-
Right, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion in this matter.
All right.
No, we, there's already been a motion.
I'm sorry. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen. We already have that motion. Let's vote. No? No problem. Right, we can do it.
But now, we, I'll make a motion and have you invoke the emergency clause.
Okay, that motion carried, by the way, okay? We have a motion to put emergency clause. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Okay, you got first last time. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Let's move on to item number six, discussion regarding occupancy surcharge. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is just really a continuation of ongoing discussions that we've had at some of your workshops recently. You, we'll see that this is not an action item on your agenda. I just simply want to have a good and open discussion and maybe see if there is some consensus building in terms of where to go relatively quickly in the future because if we do present an increase in the occupancy surcharge to the public, we need to, for the November election, we need to make a decision reasonably quickly because by statute, you would have to take definitive action. It's your July 18th or August 1st meeting. What I included in your packet was a memorandum that outlines what the fee generates currently as well as the use of funds as dictated in Shawnee Municipal Code. I also did a five-year summary of, so you see the average collection over the last five fiscal years. And then, on page two of the memorandum, taking a look at what the regional sales tax is for Shawnee and surrounding communities in the Oklahoma City metropolitan area, and then also honed in more specifically in Table 2 on lodging taxes. And what they indicate is that city sales tax, city looking in isolation in terms of about 3% of city sales tax is low for the region, but the overall tax rate is really pretty consistent with the average. And then, when you look at the lodging tax rate of 5%, that is pretty common, really the most commonly used number around the state, but also in the region. There is one that's slightly above ours, which is Oklahoma City at 5.5%. Of course, the traveling public pays not just the lodging tax, but also the sales tax. And so, the combined rate is what is quoted there. And when you look at that combined rate, you'll see that we're at or near the top of the list. When you broaden the discussion just a little bit and look at lodging taxes throughout the state, there are some that are set higher than 5% or 5.5%. In Oklahoma City, it's set at, there are some as high as 8%. So, when you look at it collectively, I think the question you have to ask yourselves are the hotel motel tax is something that probably would garner quite a bit of support from the public because you're taxing outsiders and not taxing city or county residents typically. However, it would put the tax rate above the region. And so, although that may not be a deterrent to most of the traveling public, it could be a deterrent to some. On the flip side, we have obviously many capital needs and operational needs, and this money could be used for those needs. And every 1% increase would generate $100,000. So, if you took the rate from 5%, if the public voted to increase the rate from 5% to 8%, for example, you would have about $300,000 additional dollars to allocate every year for projects, whether that be at the expo or for downtown or for the Potawatomi County Museum or for other worthy endeavors that are consistent with the code.
That's assuming we wouldn't have a decrease in people who came here this night and bought a meal at the local restaurants and things like that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely correct. So, I've spoken-
It's a double-edged sword.
It is.
You increase in one sense, you know, the citizens say, "Well, I don't have to pay. It's out-of-town people." But out-of-town people are who spend money at the mall and at the restaurants.
You're right. And the truth of the matter is, until it was enacted, until you could do some type of long-term study, we were really just talking about hypotheticals and I've-
Where does this money go exactly? It goes to general fund, you said?
No.
Or does it go to BSI?
Well, it doesn't have to go to BSI. No worries. It goes, it can be in the election.
Differently. Right now, it all goes to BSI.
And we, an example is, we know our expo is sucking wind as far as maintenance. And we know what we're contributing. So, I think what I heard from the city manager was if you could pass something like that, maybe you take part of that and, you know, we've got to get that expo up, fixed up.
What are the hotel motel owners saying about it? Aren't they taxed pretty hard right now? And we're already at the high end? Would this, like, would people just move on down the road, maybe stop in McLeod instead of staying here?
I think that's-
McLeod? I don't think that's a-
I mean, there's a big hotel over there.
Except by rain.
Certainly a potential. You know, I think it depends on the scope of the increase. If you're going from 5% to 5.5% or 6%-
That's my point. They don't want to pay taxes there, so it's, I'm just saying.
So, we don't believe then, or you haven't been able to find data yet to indicate that the local businesses would be acceptable to this change to our hotels, I guess I should say.
I've spoken to some of them, and there's, although there's many hotels here, there's just a few proprietors, so some of the ownership is the same. You know, I get the impression that there's certainly, it's just, it's an unknown, and anytime there's an unknown, there's concern. And so, you know, they don't, on the flip side, though, if that money was clearly used for improvements to tourism facilities that drew more people and filled more hotel rooms, you know, it could be a win-win. And so, this is kind of a gamble, and it is.
Would you look at, would you find out about Weatherford? I heard a story that they went up to like 10 and 1/2 or something. And again, I didn't talk to anybody in Weatherford that. I just had a fellow tell me that.
I would-
And if you check on that, because I know they're kind of out of the city and just kind of seeing Earth Town, it's not real.
They were a boom town, though. Everybody's-
Well, I think that's gone, you know, what I'm saying.
Yeah, they had the wind farms, too. People were up there for work. Harris.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we, two years ago, Wes asked me, I was going, making a trip across country and staying in hotels and so forth, and I went from here to Susanne Marie, Michigan. The cheapest hotel motel rate, add-on room rate was 13%. The cheapest one I had. And they went from there to, up to 17%. And this one that was 13%, he said, "Well, I'm out in the county, so I don't have to pay some city tax." But he still was paying 13%. I mean, that was 13%. So, I talked to the different hotel managers and, you know, asked them what they were charging. When I was in Australia, this was a couple weeks ago, I asked the hotel manager there about their charges and so forth, and he said, "Well, he didn't really know because there was all included in the room rate, and it was $169 a night." So, he didn't know what the taxes were. But the sales tax was 10%.
That's a question.
And when you price something that he was already included in the item, so your taxes weren't added on, it was already included in the item.
I just wonder, when some people quote their tax, are they quoting lodging tax and sales tax, or are they just quoting lodging tax?
Well, some of them, this one didn't have, didn't have anything because they were outside the city limits.
Yeah.
They didn't have any city tax, so there was-
And it was 13 or 10?
No, it was 13 and 1/2%.
And that was just for the lodging tax?
Right. I get quotes every week, but it's through my travel system, and it includes, always includes all the taxes, you know? I'm not necessarily against this at all. You know, I think that there is, if we dedicate it toward expo, you know, the additional funds, you know, to improvements of the expo, you know, I think it certainly has potential, you know, as long as we don't see a noticeable decrease in the people that stay in our hotels. And like I said, we'll never really know that without, you know, I don't even know if you could even do a study on it. But I think it would be interesting to get more, I think we should get more input from even our retail business and stuff, and talk to some of the folks and see what they think about increasing our motel tax.
I may be wrong on this, but I believe, since in my four years here, that the number one tourist attraction we have here is the expo.
Yeah.
And I could be wrong. I don't know, but I really believe it is. You look at this youth rodeo coming in.
Yeah.
I mean, you just look at all that stuff, and if you don't fix it up, that you're either going to have to take for you people that are going to be here next, you're going to have to figure out a way to give them $300,000 more a year. That puts you up to $650,000 or something because the barns are leaking and all that. You're going to lose business, and guess what? When you lose business, they go away from the hotels.
Takes away from the restaurant.
Yeah, it takes away from the restaurants.
It's-
And so, all I'm just challenging you is to really think, yeah, it takes a lot of guts sometimes to step out and do it, but I will also tell you that if we don't do something with that expo, I've been out there and when it's raining and watched it leaking, I've been out there, you know, and it just needs some real attention, but there's other things, too.
But we should, we're not necessarily trying to get all of the additional funding-
I'm not saying that.
... and sales tax.
Oh, no.
But, you know, it's, you know, look for other opportunities-
Sure. That are going to bring in tourism dollars in here.
But if we can increase it, you know, one cent or something like that, that's still going to help.
What's the average cost of a stay going to cost them? How much is going to cost, like, bottom line, to the consumer? Is it going to be like $100 to $105? I'm saying like-
Now, if you go up 3%, if you go up 3%, let's say, we're now at five or 5.5.
We're at five.
We're at five. You go to eight, 3% and the hotel bill, let's say, is $78 or $100. That's just round, it's three bucks.
Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Hall. We need to look at this and consider getting some input and doing some structure to it. I definitely believe we need support, like the mayor was saying, for Expo Center and making some renovations and changes, but I think we need to look at impact.
Okay. Will you give us some direction? I appreciate that, and you're-
My only comment I'd make is that once you do it, you're going to see other cities doing the same thing because they're just waiting for somebody to bite the bullet and step up. I have, like I said, a friend that served on Midwest City Commission, so, you know, if we do it, then there's going to be other cities that follow suit. So, they're just waiting for somebody to step out and do it.
Well, a friend of mine over in Seminole says they're working hard on building an expo over there.
Right.
You know, this will be our, this coming year, I don't think it's this year, Randy, you might correct me, next year's 25 years, is that right, for the youth finals rodeo? IFR? That is unbelievable. And I mean, there are people, I mean, wanting that so bad, and you start losing that, and you start losing, you know, these big horse shows, and it just mounts up. I'm just telling you, so-
You just have to go to one of our local restaurants during that week to know how much help it really does the city.
Are you not, I'm going to tell you, just those rallies for those mobile homes, RVs, man, they put in tickets for everywhere they go, and then they draw out prizes. They have a huge container. They're stuffing them in, you know?
Like a 30-gallon room.
Yeah, it's huge, and then they pull them out, you know, where they've spent money in town.
Right.
Anyway, y'all need to think hard about it.
How much do the RVs pay? I mean, they don't-
They pay sales tax.
Hotels pay five, what are the, is it a dollar a night, or what do they pay?
I think that's, I'd have to double-check the ordinance.
I'd say $3, but I could be wrong.
They do pay the-
They do pay as well.
$2?
$1.
$1.
Just the $1.
I wonder if that would increase, I mean, is that something we would have to, the voters would have to vote on, too, if that increased or is it just-
You would have, you could also include that in the packet, yes, ma'am, where that-
Well, they wouldn't have to vote if the expo board decided to raise, get by another dollar, would they?
No, not if the expo board did, but if you wanted to also increase the surcharge to RVs.
Hotel.
Oh.
Is that even paper, like, or?
But that's-
We need a lot more RVs.
Small potatoes. Yeah, they're small potatoes compared to what the hotel motel-
Well, yeah, it's a small amount, but it's just something we need to do that along the windows.
Well, if we increase the total, we'll say increase it by 3%, then they would have to increase their percentage out there.
I think the big question is, is it going to increase enough overall to be a deterrent to organizations, companies, tourist companies, or whatever, booking their event here at the Expo Center or at one of the hotels, a conference or something like that? Is it going, how far is it or how close is it to the closest hotels? And is that an inconvenience enough that people would be willing to pay the difference to stay here, to be close to where they're going to have their meeting? It didn't sound, it doesn't sound to me like it's going to be a big deterrent, but, you know, that would be for the voters to decide.
I think if you keep it reasonable, it won't be a deterrent, but if you raise it to a point where it's, I think that it would be a marketing tool against you, against your competitors, to say Shawnee has the highest motel tax, you know, theirs is 20%, ours is 10%, or something like that. It's just a marketing thing.
But can you drive Oklahoma City for three bucks?
No, but what it is, it's going to, the people that are competing against us for events at the Expo Center, once they learn that we have the highest motel tax, I would be, if I was selling in that business, I would be using that, you know, as a, you know, it's just a perception thing. It doesn't really, at the end of the day, the person that's actually renting the hotel room, probably three, four more dollars isn't going to change their mind where they stay.
But I think it's going to have more to do with the facility that they want to book at and the hotels.
That's right. I'm with you, Linda. I agree with you.
If we have a state-of-the-art facility, then they're going to say, "Wow."
I agree with that. I think if we improve our facility, then we-
We need a wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, item number seven is consider resolution of support indicating favorable consideration for a tax credit award to Shawnee Affordable Housing Partners LP for the following project, 24 housing development historic downtown building located 101 East Main, south of the southwest corner of Ninth Street and Philadelphia Avenue. Is Mr. Little here? I don't see him, but, you know, as I read this, I thought we did this once, didn't we?
Right, he did on the old hospital, and-
Oh, okay.
He didn't, couldn't get enough points, so he wasn't, he didn't go.
Okay, okay. I knew we did something about the old hospital.
So, he's going to submit an application for this.
Right. They were going to do a-
But it's based on total points, so if you come up with enough points, then you can get it, maybe funded. So, it's, you know, the chances are about, I don't know, I think about 1 out of 15 you get funded, so, but anyhow, I'd move, since he's a local businessman in the states here in town, I'd move we support the resolution to support the tax credit for the law apartments and the housing.
One of the, you know, kind of a plug for downtown-
Oh, yeah.
Is that for years and years and years now, other cities have been really selling and promoting downtown based on residential and law living, and Oklahoma City has even run out of existing buildings and are, have been building lots of new apartments in different areas for years now because those others are all sold, sold out. And a lot of your smaller cities, too, throughout the United States, and here in Oklahoma are doing that, and they're having tremendous success, and it's one of the big things that's helping their downtowns turn around because when people move down there and live down there, and there are people willing to make this kind of investment, then the businesses are going to follow.
I agree with that.
And we really need to- And we really need to, to get those buildings occupied downtown.
That's a very good point. Okay, I've heard a recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, I didn't hear a motion from him, I heard him say, I recommend.
Oh, yeah.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, the recommend is a motion, that we approve it, and we have a second by Commissioner Doster. Okay, uh, would you read it, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution supporting the construction of a twenty-four unit housing development by Shawnee Affordable Housing Partners LP, located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and supporting favorable, favorable consideration be given for tax credit award for this development.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Item number eight, consider resolution for capital assets policy. Cindy?
We currently, um, our threshold for capital assets is twenty-five hundred, and I have looked everywhere, I think Phil's Department has looked, we don't have a, we can't figure out where twenty-five hundred dollars came from. Um, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends seventy-five hundred as the threshold, but we're more comfortable with five thousand, so anything over five thousand, we'll capitalize and depreciate, um, and then we have, like, our computers and iPads and all that stuff, IT keeps a detailed list of, we call those walkaways, so we know exactly what they have. Um, my staff the last year has really gone out and took photos, got serial numbers and everything to get the fixed assets where they should be, and we're still working on it, um, but staff recommends that we use the five thousand dollar threshold.
Cindy, could you educate me on a couple of things? When you say that your staff has had to go out and do inventory, are you gonna see that this will help to streamline and make this more efficient where you don't...
Then they're not chasing something that's twenty-five, you know, two thousand five hundred and one dollars, um, you know? I mean, our overall capital assets are over fifty million dollars, so five thousand is a pretty low threshold, too.
Is, is this gonna change the balance sheet that much?
No.
Are these...
Will this change insurance costs at all?
No, we, everything, even this, even if something we feel that needs to be put on the insurance, if it's with her, it's five thousand or less, we will put it on the insurance.
But you're talking about like pilferables, too, like these iPads and stuff like that? So...
But we might buy a piece of equipment that we use in the parks that's twenty-four hundred, we don't capitalize it, but if it's twenty-five oh one, we capitalize it right now. It's a small, and we do straight line, it's five years, so twenty-five hundred is...
It's just a lot of paperwork.
It's a lot of paperwork, a lot of chasing.
So five thousand, did you say the other cities were, a lot of them were at seven?
Some of them, yeah, a lot of them are five, we've looked around, some are seventy-five hundred, um, but we have a lot of things that are like five thousand over, and I would still...
So your recommendation is five thousand?
That's a good one, it becomes an expense item.
Okay, all right, we've heard her recommendation.
Motion to approve the change in the capital tax, or capital asset allocate, uh, designation to five thousand, threshold to five thousand.
From two thousand five hundred to five thousand?
Yeah, I have a motion by, okay, second by I, Smear Harret. Uh, okay, I guess you need to read the title, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, adopting a city commission policy relating to capital assets of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries, okay? Number nine, consider resolution to surplus certain city of Shawnee vehicles and donate to the city of McLeod. Mr. Bryce, do you...
You sure they want 'em?
Well, if you'd have used them more, they, they wouldn't want them, so...
Got to run two, three of them, I might go paint, aren't you?
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, uh, we were, we were asked by the city of McLeod if we had anything, uh, sitting around that, that they could use, evidently, uh, they're, they're in bad shape for some vehicles over there. Uh, and, and this is what we come up with, as you can see, one of them's been sitting there three years, and, uh, the other one, you know, was just replaced in twenty sixteen. Uh, as, as far as, uh, you see the pictures, that we're, we're not gonna get very much out of them if we run them through auction, uh, five hundred to a thousand dollars now, these vehicles, um, they do start, they'll have to be jumped off.
Jump prices are worth about eighty bucks.
So, uh, you know, we don't, we don't see where, where this is gonna hurt the city any at all to, to go ahead and donate.
But what do we get in return for this big deal, from them?
A pat on the back.
Thank you. Well, hopefully, maybe one day if we need their help, they'll help us, yeah.
Is this, this is all legal, right?
We get goodwill and... No, they're in the same truck, they're, are they both the one-ton utility trucks?
Yes, yes, yeah, both of them have a utility bed on them.
So they got one for parts?
I think they have a couple sitting over there they use for parts.
Do what?
You said they have a couple sitting over there that they use for parts, and that's...
I was just gonna also mention that over the last couple of years, you've, you've also, um, donated vehicles to the OBU Police Department, and we've made other, other similar small donations, so this would be consistent with that.
I'd move to don't have them to McLeod, City of McLeod.
We have a motion.
I guess I, my only question had been to Jen, since I'd noticed that we, we pretty consistently give things to McLeod, and do we have some type of agreement in place, or do they just communicate with you and, and indicate they have a need, or...
Yeah, that, they'll generally come to us, we, we don't, the only agreement we have with them is, is for Wes Watkins, uh, currently.
Which hopefully, hopefully they'll take these trucks and do some, a better job than they've been doing out there, right?
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, okay? Okay, uh, would you read it, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain items a personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, prescribing said items and authorizing the donation of said items to the city of McLeod.
Okay, let's vote, ladies and gentlemen. Motion carries. Item number ten is acknowledge sales tax report. Move on. No, she's got good news.
Oh, well, yes, it's...
Sort of.
Sort of. Um, the June sales tax, we collected one million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, we're actually seven hundred and thirty-two dollars less than last year.
What happened?
I put on the dice. Um, these are our top ten revenues, um, and this is based on when they receive, even though, like, in June, we may receive, you know, May's OG&E or sales tax, this is, this is on a cash basis. And as you see, I'm, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time, our top revenue, which is the top five, is up from five point two five percent from last year. Overall, our revenues, the top ten is up three point seven percent over last year. Use tax is really doing extremely well, um...
But the franchise tax is way down, it looks to me like, huh?
The franchise, what happens with that is...
What is that?
We had, we had a fairly mild winter, and it's getting really hot now, so they kinda balance each other, the gas or the electric, it all depends.
The gas, the electric.
And even though we, there's a couple of them that are blank, because we have not received last month, we have not received June's, we won't receive that until July or beginning of August. This is on a cash basis of the day it was received, so it's doing apples to apples. So it'll be interesting to see what, like, the electric's gonna be, because it's been hot.
Mm-huh.
And these are, the next, the second page is the top sales tax categories, like I normally give you, and as you can see, sales tax is up four point one five percent from last year. And then quickly, on the last page, I did a quick thing on SMA, and they're pretty much flat, they're a little down. Um, I am also, use tax is really taking off, and I know I talked to Commissioner AG, I'm trying to break them up by retail and all that stuff to see, I just haven't finished that, and when I do, I'll just mail it to you. Because it'd be interesting to see what the trend is on the use tax, because like last year, this month, we only got sixty-three thousand, and we got a hundred and twenty-eight thousand this year, or this month in sales tax, that's double.
I'm kinda curious, what was the cost of fuel this time last year? Was it still quite low?
Yeah, I think it was, I mean...
It was two dollars and something?
It was in the low two dollars, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we, fortunately, we've seen a nice little abundance in the...
Right.
In the, the gas lines for the, you know, each department, because the gas, we do budget, um, a little on the higher side, because we don't know what gas prices do. I really would hate to come back to the, they're, guess what, we don't have enough for gas, I need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more for gas.
Well, I see our water sales are up a little bit, from five nine to six oh, oh eight, but yet our sewer is down.
Yeah, that's kinda close.
Well, I thought it was all tied to the, sort of the same thing.
It's sewer averaging.
We went on sewer averaging in April.
Oh.
Every April, we reevaluate all the, um, accounts in the city. We take your winter months and average them, so you don't have to pay the high sewer during the summer, so that's why the sewer loads are down, so...
Oh, okay.
And you'll see that, like, the water sales from one year of May may be totally off, it's the date spilled, not necessarily the service date.
Also, when it rains, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right, and I'm in the process right now of turning everything on a cash basis to an April basis, so I will actually move them to where they belong, what year they belong to, so, for the audit.
Any more questions, I tell you, this is a great report, thank you, Cindy.
And I'll get the use tax to you probably by the end of the week. Because that's a little hard, that's, that's harder, because one month you got these top five, and then the next month, maybe these top five, you know, and they're not, it's not like sales tax, you know that wholesale tra, you know, retail will be...
What would fall in unclassified?
Unclassified is people who have new permits or put a wrong number on their report.
Okay.
And it's, they have it every month, so...
Okay, I guess just curious. Well, thank you very much. Item number eleven is consider bids, uh, for the year fifteen sixteen to Rehab Asphalt Streets project, Mr. Crowicki.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, we opened bids last meeting for our Rehab Asphalt Streets projects, and we received two bids, one from Haskell Lemon, uh, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars, and a second bid from Rudy Construction for seven hundred and eight thousand, thirty dollars. Uh, we have tabulated the bids and stuff, and they should be at the table in your packet. Uh, we reviewed them, and Haskell Lemon is a very quality contractor, experienced and semi-local, and we would go ahead and, uh, recommend awarding this project to Haskell Lemon in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars for our Rehab Asphalt Streets project. And the main street on this one, if you recall, when we requested authorization advertised, was, uh, to do Mall Drive the full mile from Kickoo to Hears and redo it.
Is there gonna be enough asphalt in there to take care of Lake Road?
Do what?
Is there gonna be enough asphalt to take care of that?
Not, not on this one, because this one, this one right here was, uh, if you recall, if you go back to when we requested authorization advertised, we listed four streets, uh, they were Shawnee Mall Drive, Center Street, uh, from Highland to Ten, Levent from Center to Draper, and Whittaker from Center to Draper over in the Horseman area. Now, this project was bid out as a, as a maintenance-type contract, and depending on how the contractor does, uh, in town, uh, with this service, if we're, uh, agreeable to it, and they're agreeable to the prices, we can always extend the contract. This one is bid out with last year's funds, so we should, we got money in the budget for the upcoming year, and depending on how they do, we will, we can, we can add streets to the project, I guess is a long answer, but a short answer.
There are lots of streets that need it.
Can you educate me? I'd notice there is a pretty substantive difference between Haskell Lemon and Rudy Construction on the traffic control area. What, what does that entail?
It, traffic control, it, it's just the, uh, the barrels that they put out, the amount of flares they'll do, yeah. A lot of times, the, the pricing, you know, look at the, the, uh, the, they'll hide money in it, they'll unbalance their bids at times, uh, and even the efficiency of, of doing the operation. Haskell Lemon is very, very, very efficient in this, uh, in this method of nailing and overlaying, they have a lot of state contracts they do. Rudy Construction, not so, uh, experienced in, in dealing with this amount of, uh, balm, so to speak, so they're trying to control that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there gonna be any, is this, this is all funded by the city, so it's gonna be controlled by the city?
This is a hundred percent funded by the city.
Okay, so it isn't gonna be like the, the project of Kickoo Street, where it took years and years?
No, 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 once, once we do that, nail and overlay, like, even that full mile since they weren't two weeks to complete.
Right.
Now, then getting the strippers back in the schedule...
Sure.
They take a little longer, they'll be temporary, mark them.
But it'll be paid pretty good. Great.
And since it's the end of the fiscal year in July, you'll see a budget amendment bringing the money back up in the year.
I'm just saying.
I may as well accept staff recommendations for the contract.
Second. I have a motion by I, Smear Harret, second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Uh, consider, they're still under consider bids, sale of Lot Five and Six for the...
What?
Whatever that addition is.
Yagny?
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 Yagny, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Erickson?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on June sixteenth, one bid was received in the amount of three hundred and five thousand dollars for lots five and six of the Yagny addition, and that bid was received from Mr. Darren Markle. Staff has reviewed the bid, I have spoken to Mr. Markle, he's excited, uh, to complete the purchase on the property, and, um, looks forward to continuing, um, their investments in Shawnee, and so upon review, staff does recommend that you award the bid in three hundred and five thousand dollars to Darren Markle. I suspect that the, uh, closure of, of the contract will take about thirty days or so, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Uh, what happens to those funds? Do they go back into...
Good, excellent questions, sir, those funds are, um, uh, twofold, uh, immediately those funds will be used to pay off the remaining balance, when we, the city received transfer of that property, uh, from the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce, there was, uh, a note on the property that was paid off by Shawnee Municipal Authority, and so we've been using hotel motel tax since then, uh, to pay back the authority. The balance on that is one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars, and so upon payment of that, there will be one hundred and ninety thousand dollars that will be unallocated, and, although it's unallocated for a specific use, it does, it is, uh, limited in use by code, and so it has to be used for tourism-related activity, and so what we're going to do is...
Expo Center?
Take a look at different project needs, and, um, before any of those funds are spent, we would, we would come back to the, to this body for, uh, for review and approval. So, uh, upon closure, those funds will, will simply remain, uh, in the fund for, um, for tourism, and then we will, uh, bring back a specific proposal to you for those funds, uh, probably, um, in August.
You probably already have projects, so kinda...
We are working on that.
Sure you can find it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I may as well sell the property.
Justin, could you educate me on one thing? Darren Miracle, does he have a company, or is he just a private owner, or...
He does have a company, yes ma'am, they have, um, M&amp;J Contractors, and, uh, they have, they do a lot of utility work, uh, in this community, they also own a number of, um, of, um, properties, including some multi-family properties, so they are, um, they're an established, um, member of the community, and very familiar to code enforcement and the billing department and planning department.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion. I have a motion on the floor.
One second.
Have a second by Commissioner AG, okay, let's vote.
Sorry, I didn't get to give the first...
Motion carries, okay? Item number twelve, new business.
No, sir, no new business.
No new business, okay. Item number thirteen is Commissioners' comments.
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, Frontier Country is like a region-wide economic development-type organization, and a lot of cities belong to that, and they do a lot of marketing for the, uh, the cities in the, in the region and the area, and they have had an award ceremony recently, and were proud to announce that our Red Bud City Night on the Bricks Festival, which was the[1757.83]
announce that our Red Bud City Night on the Bricks Festival, which was the first Red Bud Festival downtown, that was organized by Safe Events for Family, won first-place award, and there was a lot of tough competition for that, I think they were competing against festivals in Norman, Moore, Yukon, a lot of the bigger cities, and so that's quite an accomplishment for the Safe Events for Families that organized that.
It was exciting to see them get that award, I tell you, I was out there, and it just, it was the big-time award, of all the awards, it was the ultimate award to get, and again, there's a lot of activity going on downtown, and it's exciting to see what's been done with the SEF and BSI and all of them together.
So, yeah, I had a couple of citizens bring this to my attention, and I actually went and looked, there's still construction signs on Independence going toward Kickapoo, I think it's leftover from the work on Kickapoo, there's like four or five constructions signs that there's no constructions anywhere around there, right? I know the contractor probably just, because it's, because they're off of, off of Kickapoo Street.
Yeah, I think they actually have not closed that project out yet, there's a little bit of final things to do, including some final striping along Kickapoo.
Really?
So...
Over there by that pizza place and all that?
So we just thought it was done?
The punch list and all... There's a punch list, that's exactly what...
So we better be careful when we say we finally got it done.
So we actually need those construction signs there, because there's no...
Contractor will take them down to the close of the project.
Because there's no obvious work going on for months.
You guys gotta know where to go when they go, when they show up to work, so...
I have a couple of comments, first of all, a group of us went down to Dunbar, organization had a deal Friday night, and a meal and everything, so we've done, down there had about, probably about 100 people there, 100, and had about 40 kids involved. We announced that the Project Safe, I mean Project Heart was gonna move the kitchen there, also that we didn't renew the wise contract, so they're looking forward to maybe some new activities there. The other thing, we had quite a few turnout for the parade, Juneteenth parade, but we didn't have much onlookers, but anyhow, we had a lot of walking flows and things like that, so I'm sure that, I don't see Dale back there, but Dale was gonna try to in the future to get something worked out so that we could all be on the same page, it was the Trail's Day on the Juneteenth celebration. Another thing, though, is that, did you check in to see what would be, what would be required if we changed that franchise tax to a franchise fee? And again, street shape coming along great, looks nice, and hopefully get the other block opened up here in a few days. They poured concrete over the weekend, I think Friday and Saturday, at Broadway and Main, so it's really coming along.
They shouldn't have any trouble with the curing pretty quick, should they?
Yeah.
Maybe curing is too fast.
Maybe curing is too quick, huh?
Just wanted to think real quick, while I'm thinking about it, because I might, if I don't mention it right now, it's the Fourth of July Parade by the Veterans Committee and the American Legion, and that are hosting that, and it'll be the July the 4th downtown, not sure exactly where they'll start, but they're gonna end up at the Veterans Memorial.
And last time, it started on North Broadway or something, didn't it?
Started out, it'll be...
Oh, did it?
Yeah, and it came down this way, I was remembering.
Well, those that were walking wound up riding a long way, so...
A long walk, yeah.
So watch for the announcement, announcement about that in the paper, it will be in the Happenings and the New Star, and so anyhow, that'd be, that's, that's a very nice ceremony, I've gone to it several years, and it'd be nice if you were available, if you could, I know it's the Fourth of July, but if you could turn out for that.
So Randy, when's the rodeo start?
Check-ins on July 8th.
July 8th?
The check-in is July 8th, and the first performance is Sunday 9th at 10:00 at 7:30.
So the entrance ceremony is Sunday night, the 10th?
At 7:30.
I just wanted to say, I took the family the other day to Boy Scout Park, and everybody, like everybody there was having a great time, that place is wonderful. It seemed like, yeah, it's, it's really been improvement.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great park, lots of activity.
I, yeah, I just couldn't, I couldn't believe it, you know, seeing that many folks out there, and there must have been over 100 and something people out there, and this is just a random time, so I wanted to tell James and the Parks crew, it's, it looks really great out there, so keep up the good work, thanks.
I'd had someone communicate with me, actually a couple of constituents, in regard to the airport track lighting, I wasn't sure if it was coming and going, or if there was problems with it, but they said several nights, they'd been out there and it wasn't on, so I didn't know if there was problems with that or not.
I'm pleased to report that that project is now, now back on schedule, there were some delays because of some additional review that the FAA required, OG&E, I think, thought that they had everything taken care of, but they ended up needing to do some additional review, have some approvals from, I think, the office out of Fort Worth, and so they have now received that, that authorization to continue. OG&E uses a contractor for that work, that contractor is on another job, but he will be back, I think, in, in July, and we're hoping to wrap that project up in, in August.
The signs are still...
The FAA required some covers, or what are you gonna call, baffles, on top of some of the lights, because they were showing up...
Could use a shine down, blind pilot.
In fear with the pilot, so they had to come back and do those, and had to order them, so there, that was a delay.
I will say, there's no additional cost to the city, though, for any corrections, so OG&E's gonna take care of that cost, so unfortunately, the project's been delayed, the good news is no, no expense to taxpayers, and they will be up for the fall as things start to, start to get darker earlier.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other comments? If not, then ladies and gentlemen, I am going to recess our city commission meeting, and I'm going to call our airport authority to order and declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, a second by...
So moved.
Vice Mayor Harrod.
I know, I'm just, I'm hearing from both sides, I was trying to do ladies first. Okay, okay. Commissioner Shaw, okay, let's vote. Motion carries, any new business?
No, sir.
No new business, okay, I will adjourn the airport authority and call to order the municipal authority, declare we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Vice Mayor Harrod, seconded, okay, let's vote on that matter. Motion carries, any new business?
No, sir.
No new business, then I will adjourn the municipal authority, and I will call back to order the city commission meeting, and being no further business, I will adjourn the city commission meeting.
I only hope we...
Sorry, I can't handle the use tax. The use tax, no. I'm trying to flip our gear. There's a lot of stupid things.